Call the meeting of county council order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming. Optional prayer, Mrs. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. All that we have is a gift from God. All that we do is our gift to God. Forgive us when we think too highly of ourselves and strive for privilege and honor. We do not believe we have anything to give, but not true. We have knowledge, time, and talent we need to share. We come this day grateful, trusting, knowing love, and sharing our lives, not so much for us, but for others. To one another, peace be within you. Amen.
Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here. Before we get to the hearing of the public, Mr. Anderson has to have the floor at this moment. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we are presenting two citations in memoriam to two members of our community that passed, one over the summer and one this fall. First, I would like to mention Harvey McClure, who was a true gentleman in every sense of the word, and a native of Erie County, being born in Wesleyville, part of, growing up during the, or part of, I should say, the greatest generation, being a member of that generation that fought in World War II. We're here in DeBron Star, and then attended law school at the University of Pennsylvania, became a part of the Judge Advocate's Office, and retired as a lieutenant colonel in the Judge Advocate's Office after the Korean War. Coming back to Erie County, he served in a number of capacities, including being a solicitor for Erie County. He was also a board member and very active in a number of organizations throughout Erie County, including the Masonic Organizations and the Sons of the American Revolution, just to name a few. He has left behind two daughters and his wife Barbara, and we just want to say to his family and to all of Erie County that we remember Harvey, and we will not forget the service that he has given to our community. Also, we have a citation for Barb Hagerty. Barb also was a lifelong member of Erie, the Erie County community, being born in 1952. We lost Barb way too soon. She was a great friend of mine and a great friend to most people who had any involvement or association with downtown. She was very active as a member of the community, particularly in those events downtown, helping to start the Downtown Improvement District and the Downtown Fridays Organizations, which then became the Thursday Block Parties. Her and her husband, Mike, have owned the Plymouth Tavern for over forty years, and Barb will be very, very missed by everybody in the community. She was very, very well thought of and loved by all those who knew her. So, to Barb's family, we here on council and all of Erie County will remember her, and just want to acknowledge both of these citizens of Erie County in the official minutes. And I appreciate my colleagues joining along with me to honor them here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Hearing of the public, all those that called in ahead of time will have five minutes. Anybody thereafter will have three. And first tonight is Randy Barnes. When you step to the microphone, if you could just give your name and the municipality in which you live, and then we'll give you five minutes from there.
Randy Barnes, Harbor Creek, I'm in Dr. Faust's district, and tonight I want to talk about Missing Millions. And the missing millions are, I want to read from an immediate release, two and a half years ago, this is May of 2016, Ekra invests a million dollars into Bridgeway Capital. Our money, we invested into Bridgeway Capital, a million dollars, because Bridgeway was going to leverage it four to one. We were going to have five million dollars to spend. We put up a million, they leverage it, how bankers do, and then we're going to have five million dollars to spend. I ask you, where's the five million? Because didn't they just come back a week and a half ago and ask for more money? They did. Two and a half million. And they're going to match it two and a half. So, they're going to match one for one this time. What happened to the four to one deal that we got two and a half years ago? Now, it's one to one. But let me ask you, where's the initial five million? Our million and the four they put up, where is it? You know? Do we have a criminal running the enterprise up there? I'll tell you where it is. We know about the daycare center up here, a great thing. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars they needed to buy the building. I don't know where the money came from. I'm suspecting they got a down payment from Bridgeway. So, I went, the best place to go is to the Bridgeway Capital site. Go to the Capital site, click on the Erie office. Four boxes come up. First box, click it, Farmer Daughter Country Market. I thought, I haven't seen the Farmer Daughter Country Market. Well, you know why? Because it's in Seneca. Do you know where Seneca is? About ten miles east of Franklin, Pennsylvania. That's on the Erie site of Bridgeway Capital. Second thing on the Erie site of Bridgeway Capital, and remember, we're paying this guy in Bridgeway Capital to be here, to lend our money out. We're paying him. He's not doing it for free. Lockhart Auto. I thought, Lockhart Auto, Lockhart Auto. East County, right? No. It's in Ford City. Ford City, you know, it's south of Butler, by Wescatanning. So, that's two out of the four boxes on the website for Erie office. The third box is J.J. Wurst. Happens to be Mr. Wurst started business in 1963, his son started to buy him out in 2005. Dad got to say, hey, I want the money now. So, we lent Mr. Wurst some money in the past two and a half years to buy his dad out. Okay? And then we have the Dapper Don Barber Shop. We have the French maids, who they do their cleaning there, and they dispatch their people out of the place up there. And we have the learning ladder. Okay, so, we have three legitimate businesses and Mr. Wurst's business, and we have five million dollars to work with. Where's the five million dollars? I'll tell you where the five million, we never had the four. The four was just a smokescreen to get the million. The million's gone. It's gone. Because two weeks ago, we saw county executive and Joe Schember standing there with a five million dollar check, because two and a half was Erie County gaming revenue money. What does that have to do with funding, the human services, grants shall be used to fund cost of human services, infrastructure improvements, facilities, emergency service, health and public safety expenses? How does this finding, funding Bridgeway Capital to lend our money out? Now, do the math, a million, two and a half years ago, two and a half million a week ago, three hundred thousand dollars for an accelerator, if my math is right, that's three point eight million dollars of our Erie County gaming revenue money, given to some loan sharks in suits. You know, they always dress nice. Not like me, I get, well, whatever, you know, my ties won't. But anyways, neither here nor there. So, I got to thinking, Joe Schember, banker for forty years, king of bonds, is up there with that big check, because, you know what his budget for economic development is next year, proposed? One million, seventy-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. The Erie City taxpayers are going to pay for an economic development office a block away. But you know what? We got to give our money to Bridgeport Capital to get anything done in this town. Hey, thanks, council, for watching out for us. Tell me where the four million went. I'll wait, four, four, eight, one, four, I don't want to give my number over the thing, but get a hold of me. I'm anxious to hear. Thank you. Criminal enterprise. Oh, yeah, that's where I've been.
Randy, thank you, your time has expired.
Oh, you're right. Thanks.
Right, I have a clock, too. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Sean Graves. I live in the city of Erie. I'm the 4-H educator representing the Erie County, and today we want to give you an update on some of the things that are going on in Erie County with our 4-H program. And we have with you today some of our 4-H teen council members to talk to you today.
Hello, I'm Ashley Cowzer. I'm the president of Erie County 4-H Teen Council.
And I'm Emily Schumber, and I am a 4-H member of the council.
I'm Sibyl Brown, and I'm a 4-H member.
I'm Dave Griffin, and I'm a 4-H member of the council.
Did you know that in 1902, 4-H was started? We are a part of the countywide organization Erie County 4-H Teen Council. What we are is a group of teenage leaders of the Erie County 4-H program, and today we're here to speak to you about a few of the 4-H events and programs that we put on in our county. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Our county's 4-H programs hold great achievements and potential. Thank you. The 4-Hs in 4-H stand for heads, hand, heart, and health. 4-H is an opportunity to reach more in depth in agriculture through hands-on experiences with a variety of things such as livestock, leadership, hands-on, small projects, and horse shows, and the PA State 4-H Horse Show that took nineteen youth exhibitors and brought back three state championships. 4-H is open to anyone who lives inside the county on ages eight to eighteen, along with the 4-H Beginner Program called Cloverbuds, which is ages five to eight. 4-H is a nation's largest leading youth association. The Erie County holds over twenty-five 4-H clubs alone. 4-H shapes kids and teenagers into successful leaders with projects on topics they love. Thank you.
Some of the events that Erie County 4-H does include the annual Waterford Fair Youth Livestock Sale. This benefits 4-Hers hard work. 4-Hers work endlessly all year to prepare the best homegrown livestock in the county. The sale is a great way to auction off to our local buyers. The sale always takes place the Thursday after Labor Day at the Waterford Fairgrounds. Another event that Erie County 4-H hosts is a general auction, typically the first or second Saturday in May. This auction has items donated and gathered by local 4-Hers and businesses, and auctions these items off to the public. A new event that is being hosted by Erie County Teen Council this year is a government day. On March 23rd, 2019, from one to three, planned to be at the Blasco Library, Teen Council invites any local government official to join in on a panel series of their very own Teen Council members. That afternoon will serve as an information on behalf of 4-H, with snacks as well. There will be letters and flyers to come. Other events that we participate include cook-off, lock-in, spring kickoff, achievement night, state leadership conference, Capitol Days, state achievement days, teen leadership retreat, 4-H summer camps, livestock camp, and National 4-H Congress. I myself recently attended 4-H National Congress in Atlanta, Georgia, where I had the opportunity to gather with over one thousand 4-H delegates from forty-four different states. Together, we did community service, workshops, and leadership activities. This event was paid for through the Erie County 4-H program for me.
We have included a variety of pamphlets in your folder to demonstrate the activities that 4-H has provided us with. In your folders are flyers and pamphlets of Erie County 4-H events and programs. Also in the folder is an information sheet that gives information about the 4-H related to our county.
You can show your support by getting involved with the 4-H events we mentioned tonight, and we hope that you accept our further invitations of 4-H events to come in the future. On behalf of Teen Council, we'd like to thank you for your time tonight, and we encourage you to get involved and show your support for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you all leave, what schools do you attend?
I'm a senior at Fort LeBeuf High School.
I'm a senior at Fort LeBeuf High School.
I'm an eighth grader at Fort LeBeuf High School.
And I'm a seventh grader at Wattsburg Middle School.
Very good. No.
I actually have a question.
This is really not a Q and A session, so I apologize. I'd like to stick to that, okay? You can catch him afterward.
Yeah, would you see me afterwards?
Sorry about that. I think you understand. Okay, anybody else from the public wish to be heard tonight? You'll have three minutes. Please just step right up. There's no need to rush either. We'll get to everybody who wants to speak tonight. That's quite all right. Again, if you could just state your name and the municipality in which you live, then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Thomas Allen, Harbor Creek. I am here in an attempt to restore the republic. I'm here to tell you why the government does not work for you. While you were sleeping, the Constitution for the United States was quietly folded up and put away. On February 21st, 1871, the United States government became a private corporation. The reason for this is the corporation for the United States made them operate in de jour, in law, common law, the law of the land. The Constitution of the United States is a counterfeit of the original. This is the fictitious, this places, places the fictitious government in de facto, in practice, the law of the sea, the color of state law. Black's Law Dictionary says that it is illegal or illegitimate in the sense it is contrary, the opposite of de jour. Did you ever notice on your driver's license, the all-capital name? This is where the deception lies. The devil lies in the details. They are using American Sign Language, glossar, D-based Latin, better known as dog Latin. Dog Latin is unhyphenated, all uppercase Latin, symbolic text that follows the grammatical rules of English and not the grammatical rules of Latin. It is the poison in the text. It is the corruption in the contract. Black's Law, fourth edition, calls it the language of the illiterate. Now, we must remember, freedom isn't free. We must stand up and fight for it. If you trade your freedom for security, eventually you lose them both. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to be heard tonight? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we don't have any minutes to approve tonight, so reports of the county officials, the county executive are designated. Mr. Sparber?
Right.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On December 6th, the Finance Committee met and agreed to put under new business items A through F, also items S through Z, as well as items double A, double C, and double D. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Fatika? Personnel Committee, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personnel Committee also met last Thursday, December 6th, and we agreed to place on tonight's agenda the following items, items G through R, items double B, items double E through double O. And that concludes my personnel.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Horton? Reports of other members of council, Mr. Horton?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, colleagues and visitors and citizens. We're ending 2018, a year in which we enacted the Erie County Pay Plan. We're implementing a year in which our 9/11 system has made major strides towards completion, to the tower phrase. So, we've done a couple of really, really major items. I come this evening concerned about the one item that I, that I, of business, that I don't feel that we at Erie County, the administration or this body has taken care of, and I don't think we've given it the energy that we should. And that item is the, our efforts to achieve and obtain a community college. More than anything in this region, the single most important thing or tool that would lead or lift our many, many children and our many, many seniors out of poverty is education. In fact, I submit to you for argument, there are only really two real ways that you, that one finds themselves or works them way out of poverty, and it's either through education or through employment. And so, while we're in the midst of a major renaissance here in the city of Erie in particular, much of it is in the footprint of the Erie County Second Legislative District, where I represent forty thousand residents along the Bayfront. I represent four public housing tracts, the Harbor Homes, the Franklin Terrace, the Erie Townhouse Apartments, the Bird Drive Apartments. I represent the area along South Shore Drive and around Frontier Park and the Gridley Park area. I represent the area around the Martin Luther King Center in the Lower East Bayfront, all the way into Lawrence Park. In fact, just about from a baseline, except for where portions were gerrymandered out. One might say it's about from the Eighteenth Street all the way back to the Bay. And I draw those distinctions from the geography of it, because there's some really significant things that are happening in that, in that footprint. We have over a billion dollars' worth of investment going on. We're really, really pleased Erie's on the move, that private and government partnerships. I ran on that my first term. I truly believe that when private entities in government work together for shared responsibility and shared governance, I think wonderful, wonderful things can happen when it's done right. And so, we've talked about the LERTA, we've talked about many things that nauseam, but the one thing we haven't really had dialogue on or discourse is the community college. And I'm embarrassed to say that as a driving force behind the community college, when my constituents ask me where we're at with it, Councilman Anderson, I honestly can't tell them. I tell them it's in Harrisburg, and it's in the hands of the Board of Education. So, and so, some other things happened last year, too. Erie was, I guess we're not on the list anymore for the worst city in America for African-Americans to live and thrive. Not sure we moved the ball much, but we moved it enough to get off the list. We still have a, I think a report came out last week, or to Sunday's paper, our child poverty rate, despite all the good efforts of many good men and women in the county, it hasn't gotten better, it's gotten worse. Sadly, we still have, the silence is deafening on the community college. We have GE all but off the door. We have WabTuck coming in. We have a cracker plant sixty miles away from here that's supposed to support economies, local economies within a seven hundred centrifugal mile area, and Erie County's not eating. We don't have a community college still north of Interstate 80. I'm embarrassed, I haven't met the lobbyists. I'm embarrassed that maybe I haven't done enough to be at the table with the county executive, who we really believe is earnestly wants a community college as well. I can't say that we've been, that the process has been transparent enough, at least. I don't know about my other colleagues, but I haven't heard much about it. Yet, things continue to deteriorate around here. And so, when we talk about, and my, this is county government, we're blessed to be financially where we are, but when we talk about the city, which makes up a large part of my constituency, having an eleven million dollar deficit, yet we still want to do LERTA, which I'm not against LERTA, I'm pro-LERTA, actually, one might say. I'm just not LERTA, I'm just not pro-LERTA, north of the Bayfront Highway. I don't think anything along the Bayfront, along the waterfront should be tax exempt while our schools are closing and while we have a financial watch, tower, while forty kids are in the classroom at Central High and the threat of other middle schools are closing. And I, and I think it's unconscionable, almost criminal, to even be talking about giving away our tax base while we're saying, while we're giving away our children's future, because at some point, the bonds are going to come due. Some of us will be gone when the 2030-year bond comes due, some of us will be gone, but our children, somebody's got to pay for that. We owe it to them to at least prepare them and equip them to meet the challenge. And we should not, above all else, let some outsider, Senator Scarnati, I haven't heard anyone from our government, local, or anyone else, challenge him. He gets to say whether we have an Erie Regional College or not, which we, we think the Erie Regional or Rural College is a great idea, and we welcome that, because any opportunity for children in Erie County, then yeah, I support. But what we, what the problem is, that they threaten our right to exist. And the problem, the magnitude of the problem is so large, our test, the other article, our test scores are in the drink. So, we don't want to do television, long-distance training from St. Mary's or from Corey. I know they tell us it's going to be a brick and mortar building here, but what we want, what we work for, with this body's support, it was a Erie County branded community college, and we deserve to have the same rights that Senator Scarnati's constituents have in his backyard. We're paying for it. We're paying for the other fourteen community colleges, and our kids don't get to eat, our kids don't get to participate, while we have the poor zip code in the Commonwealth, because that's in my district, too. Building all around them, building all over them, coding them in, coding them out. No one has a plan for where the poor are going. And if we don't need ten years, if we can afford to give ten years' worth of tax relief to someone, let it be towards a community college. If we can afford to give ten years' worth of tax relief on the waterfront, let it be towards ten years of a community benefit agreement to train our people, so that we, who are sixty miles away, not seven hundred miles away from the cracker plant, that we can enjoy economic prosperity as well. Everyone says a rising tide lifts all boats, but it's looking like Puerto Rico around here. Senator Scarnati wants to, is the equivalent of throwing us paper towels. And I reject his principle. And there's no reason why the Erie Regional College and the Erie Community College could not coexist, and they should. It's time to quit acting like children. They look like, they look at our large community, they look at our children as commerce. And if we're not careful, we let vehicles in, that would actually result in a lot, starts to look a lot like perhaps predatory lending all over again, in that we go to college, they sign them up for class, they enroll in the class, they fail the class, the money's gone, the bill exists. And so, maybe it's not fifteen thousand at one of our state institutions, maybe it's eight thousand or five thousand at the Erie Regional College. I believe that Erie Community College would support and would work in tandem with the Erie Regional College, in that many of the students that come out of the Erie School District will require remedial training before they can even consider, many of them don't even have the technology to participate in such a... in such the vehicle that's being proposed. And so I'm not against the LERTA. I'm against the LERTA on the Bayfront. I think LERTA is a good thing. I think residents deserve something. We raised your taxes. I think you ought to get something for it. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been reminded over the past year that there's a growing number of low income people in Erie County. There is no magic or any one solution to solve the problem. But there are many organizations not connected to our government doing their part. There are countless food pantries and food stamps provide a balanced diet for the family. And there are organizations that send food home with the children for the weekend. And this year, the program was extended into the summer months. There are homeless shelters and Section Eight housing to help with the rent cost. Funds are given to families to help with the cost of living. Lie Heep helps with the utilities and some small housing rehabilitation. Clothing is collected to be given away. Warm coats is donated and given to individuals to keep warm in the cold weather. And I and many others donate money and clothing to these causes. It is unfortunate that there are any people in need in Erie County. But here they are, in need. Many are doing their part to help. Many receive financial assistance from the state and federal governments. There is Medicaid for medical help, dental clinics to help keep families healthy. Cell phones are provided for safety to contact nine one one. There is more. In addition to the community organizations trying to help, our county government is also helping. Erie County's Summer Jobs and More Program is the program that is available to young people ages sixteen to twenty one. And this year, in the budget, fifty thousand was added to provide for the fifteen year olds whose household incomes falls within two hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level guidelines. The program provides them with summer employment, on the job experience, and connections to potential future employers and important soft skills training that will help them as they look to continue their education to find permanent employment. Hundreds of young people from both the city and of Erie and elsewhere in the county of Erie have completed the program since inception in twenty fourteen. Erie County Department of Health supply supports low income mothers with Nurse Family Partnership, which provides free home visits first time pregnancy, low income women. Generally, women who qualify for WIC assistance qualify for this program also. They receive health guidance and parenting skills from the visits every week or two during the pregnancy and until the baby is two years of age. The Health Department also operates a dental clinic, which provides cleanings, screenings for oral cancer and dental diseases and treatments. This is all free to those who are uninsured or underinsured, both adults and children. Also through the department, there is access to healthy foods. The department operated a Healthy Corner Store Initiative and eight week program that was held at three corner stores, all located within or adjacent to some of the lowest income census tracts in the city of Erie. Residents received free health screenings and a nutrition guide, education talk, and sampled health foods and received hard bucks. These are vouchers to be used for healthy items at the store like fresh produce, low fat dietary eggs, whole grain breads and cereals, et cetera. Hundreds of residents participated. Immunizations is also offered free of charge for those who are uninsured or underinsured. This covers all standard vaccines, including and those needed by children, chickenpox, measles, mumps, and rubella, and also adults, flu, tetanus, pneumonia, et cetera. The public defender is another area that helps low income individuals. All provided, providing legal services to those who cannot afford a lawyer, those who meet federal poverty guidelines. The services are for those who are charged with an offense and is asked and at risk of becoming incarcerated, as well as those who are facing state or county parole or probation revocation or to those subject to mental health commitment proceedings. It is important to note that the operations and services of this department are entirely county funded. The Blasco Erie County Public Library is located in one of the lowest income census tracts in the city. The library offers many free services for residents beyond just books. That includes classes, computer access, both to the library and at home, through mobile hotspots, and of course, the ideal lab. Other county services for the low income individuals were public safety like nine one one center and emergency management or the programs of human services, which aim to protect vulnerable citizens and offer help to those struggling with mental health or addictions. County government does not discriminate. The county also makes grants to community organizations to help these individuals, low income groups and residents also. Some of these groups are the Erie Together, Sisters of Saint Joseph Neighborhood Network, JFK Center, Booker T. Washington Center, MLK Center, Bayfront NATO, Saint Paul's Clinic, and Urban Erie Community Development Corporation in addition. G CAC also has received a grant each year. They have several programs for the low income individuals and grants have been given to operate the Area Agency on Aging and other programs. The county of Erie does all it can to help the low income residents located within its boundaries. We need to encourage more of its residents to work together as a union to move forward its youth and young adults in a direction of self improvement and community involvement. Self discipline, self esteem need to be instilled in these citizens to improve the family unity, the community connection. Egos need to be less important to individuals and community involvement needs to be instilled in all of our citizens, working together for self improvement and individually to grow out of the low income sector. Hopefully, we as leaders can set an example to all the citizens to do their best for their municipalities and our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. Mr. Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make this very brief, really. Time and again, I see Mr. Barnes comes in here and speaks to council. And council really never responds to whatever he asks for. And I believe that Mr. Barnes does quite a bit of research in these particular areas. And in this particular area where he's talking about Bridgeway Capital, you know, I would like to find out just exactly what has happened there. Because in two thousand sixteen, when I was going to a few of the meetings, I remember when they said that they were going to give Bridgewood, I'm sorry, Bridge, I think it's Bridgway or Bridgewater.
Bridgway.
It's Bridgway Capital, a million dollars, and they were supposed to get four million. It would, yeah, it would equate to five million in total. So I, again, I'd like to find out just exactly what did happen. And I'm asking the clerk to research all the questions that he has asked and send a copy of that to our illustrious CEO of Ekra and find out what the answers are. Okay? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
Could I make a brief report? Thank you. I just wanted to echo and applaud the comments of Councilman Horton tonight, in particular, in regards to the community college. Before I became a member of council, Erie County Council stepped up and supported an initiative to move forward on a community college. After they took that vote, it went to the administration and it was, has now been in the hands of the administration. At that time, I supported the effort by being a member of Empower Erie, a board member of Empower Erie. And I'm strongly for a community college in Erie. And we patiently been waiting this last year as it's worked its way through the state with the Department of Education. But again, as Mr. Horton said, I think it's time that we begin to pick up steam in asking the questions and finding the answers out as to where Erie County stands in the community college process. Erie County deserves a community college. Erie County needs a community college. The citizens of our area deserve a community college. And this council has been in support of the initiative. And it will be in our hands to continue to support that initiative and push for and asking and getting the questions answered. So again, as we end this year and move into next, it's time for us to pick up where we left off and continue to push for a community college for all of the citizens of Erie County. With that said, I just want to extend happy holiday season to all the members of council, everyone here tonight, the employees of Erie County and all the citizens of Erie County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Do I have a motion to amend tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
Move to make second readings of items A through T.
Correct. And then also, would you like to include in that to add item zero O?
Yes. Yes, I would include that.
So a motion to by Mr. Leon to amend tonight's agenda to make second readings of all of the first readings tonight and also to add Mr. DeLuca's appointment to the redevelopment authority. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion regarding the amendment of tonight's agenda? Mr. Smith, roll call on the agenda amendment, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. For those of you that may have not have attended a meeting before, you will see on the screen a little bit more description of what we are voting on. And if you're unfamiliar with the process of council meetings, most things require two readings before we vote on them. Oftentimes, out of issues of timeliness, we move those along to second readings. And tonight is our last meeting of the year. So to wrap up a lot of housekeeping type items is why we moved them to second. And there's really no harm in many ways to doing that. It helps us take advantage of what the ordinance will allow us to do just that much quicker. So with that, we will have a second reading of ordinance number one sixty, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one sixty, twenty eighteen, fifty seventh, twenty eighteen, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of nine thousand eight hundred one dollars, creation of line item for vehicle lease.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and second by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one sixty, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number one sixty one, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one sixty one, twenty eighteen, first twenty eighteen Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of six hundred two thousand and thirty four dollars.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and second by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? And again, for those of you that maybe knew, most of our discussions occurred, our finance meeting, which occurred last Thursday. Oftentimes, there's not too much controversy with these. That's why they're passing with a seven nothing vote as well. So the lack of debate tonight does not indicate that there's a lack of debate overall. We have a move in second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
On ordinance one sixty one, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number one sixty two, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred sixty two, twenty eighteen, fifty eighth, twenty eighteen, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation and transfer of four million dollars to Capital Projects Fund for Next Generation Radio Project Record Management System.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and second by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one sixty two, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number one sixty four, please, and title only.
One sixty three, Mr. Chairman. A second reading of ordinance number one sixty three, twenty eighteen, first twenty eighteen Capital Projects Fund, supplemental appropriation of four million dollars for general fund portion of Next Generation Radio Project Record Management System.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and second by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one sixty three, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
My apologies. Now we'll have a second reading of ordinance number one sixty four, please, title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one sixty four, twenty eighteen, first twenty nineteen Capital Projects Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation and transfer of two million dollars for general fund portion of Next Generation Radio Project Record Management System.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and second by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one sixty four, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number one sixty five, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred sixty five, twenty eighteen, first twenty nineteen, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation and transfer of two million dollars to Capital Projects Fund for Next Generation Radio Project Record Management System.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and second by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one hundred sixty five, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to take items G through N in one motion tonight? Do you want to do that? Or moved by Mr. Horton? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
I just would like to separate items G, H, I, J, and K. And I have no problem in putting it as, you know, one motion for those.
To vote on those five in one motion?
Right.
All right, that's his prerogative as a member of council. So so G through K, we will vote on that one first and then we'll vote on L through M. Okay? G, H, I, J, and K will be all. Okay? Okay, and all these are, all these are appointed officials. The percentage increase is three percent, which is in line with what we gave the bargaining unit, which is pretty standard for what we've done year to year. So, Mr. Smith, a roll call, please, on items G through K.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
You know, I probably should have asked for the floor a little bit sooner, but I agree with what you say, that it is only a 3% increase on this one in 2019. But the 2018, when we had the pay plan, some of these individuals got as much as 10% increase, some 11%. So, you know, I'm in a position where I'm saying, I think enough's enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Those were approved last year in an open vote, so. Okay. And now, we'll have a roll call vote on items L through N, and to avoid the same situation as anybody, wish to comment on those three before we vote. Okay. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Could we have a second reading of ordinance number 174, please, and title only?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I would like to ask that we table this motion tonight.
About seconded.
Or, I'm sorry, the ordinance.
Moved by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mrs. Law. There's no discussion on a tabling motion, so we'll go right to a vote on ordinance number 174 to table.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Dr. Faust?
No.
So that motion, or that ordinance, I'm sorry, is tabled. Second reading of ordinance number 175, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 175, 2018, 2018 Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Fund Budget, revise expenditures from change in position.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Let the reflector, record also reflect that Mr. Leon had to leave the room for a few It's been properly moved and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 175, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
I'm sorry, Mr. Horton, it's your vote. I apologize for distracting you.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Okay. We'll bring it back this way. I'm old to save those for. Okay. That was 175. Second reading of ordinance number 176, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 176, 2018, 59th, 2018, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $1,000 for overtime reimbursement.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 176, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Second reading of ordinance number 176, please, and title only. Or, no, I'm sorry, 177.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was going to ask if we should give Mr. Leon a chance to register a vote on 175 and 176.
Did you want to vote on those, Mr. Leon?
Yes. 175 and 176, I vote yes.
On each?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record reflect that that is the will of Mr. Leon. And if you just give me a moment, the signees.
Sorry about that.
All right.
Are you ready for a second reading of 177?
Yes. Second reading of 177, please, title only, Mr. Smith.
Second reading of ordinance number 177, 2018, approval of 2019 Non-Bargaining Employees' Pay Plan.
Is a move by Mrs. Leon, Mrs. Law? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
On ordinance 177, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
On which one is that, 177?
177, yes.
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Okay. We are on ordinance number 178, please. Second reading, please, Mr. Smith, title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 178, 2018, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $89,854 for outside counsel.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Law and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 178, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Okay. We are on ordinance number 179, please. Mr. Smith, a second reading, please, title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 179, 2018, amending ordinance number 153, 2018, 2019 General Fund Budget.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Law and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 179, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon? Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Okay. Possible adoption of resolution number 61, please, title only. And for those, again, that are new to our meetings, resolutions only require one reading, so that's why we proceed right to the vote on these.
Resolution number 61, 2018, appointment affirmed to perform comprehensive single audit for Erie County and related funds for the year ending December 31, 2018.
So move.
Second.
By Mr. Leon and seconded by, was that Mrs. Fatika?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 61, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of resolution number 62, please, and title only.
Resolution number 62, 2018, approval of the 2019 Operating Capital Budget of the Erie County Convention Center Authority and related properties.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Law. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
Because of some issues that I have, I'm going to abstain from voting on this. I didn't vote for it in the beginning because I was working for an architect firm as a consultant, and that possibility may happen again, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 62, Mrs. Law? Mr. Rastetter? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Abstain.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Because these two items are similar, I think we have consensus, could I have a motion to approve resolutions numbers 63 and 64?
So move.
With one motion, that's to approve the solicitor contracts for the Office of Controller and the Office of Sheriff. Moved by Mr. Horton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolutions 63 and 64, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of resolution number 65, please, and title only.
Resolution number 65, 2018, resolution to approve the annual budget of the Erie Area Council of Governments for the calendar year ending December 31, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 65, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter? Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of resolution number 66, please, and title only.
Resolution number 66, 2018, a resolution to approve the November 7, 2018 amendment to the bylaws of the Erie Area Council of Governments.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 66, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of resolution number 67, please, and title only.
Resolution number 67, 2018, approval of pilot agreement with Bennett Wood Corporation.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Law. Any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 67, Mr. Horton? Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of resolution number 68, please, and title only.
Before I read that, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted you to note that there's about seven copies of that agreement for you to sign for Bennett Wood.
That's all? I have to sign all of them?
No.
And I abstain on the other side?
You could try that, I suppose.
All right. Thank you. Resolution number 68, have we had it properly moved at second yet?
We have not. I need to read it for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Read a possible adoption of resolution number 68, please.
A second, rather, resolution 68, 2018, approving solicitor contracts submitted by the Office of the Clerk of Records.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 68, Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of resolution number 69, please, and title only.
Resolution number 69, 2018, a resolution to approve the financial statements and independent auditors' report of the Erie Area Council of Governments for the calendar year ending December 31, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 69, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the parcel from Repositorial Front Hold Properties according to index number listed in our agenda tonight? Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion regarding that sale? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the sale of parcel, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
I'd like to move in one motion the possible appointment of Bernie Slomsky to the Erie County Land Bank, possible appointment of Haley Linsky to the Erie County Human Relations Commission, possible appointment of Aaron Sizmarkey to the Erie Regional Airport Authority, a possible appointment of Dominic DiPaolo to Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority, possible appointment of Faith Kindig to the Erie County Agricultural Land Bank Preservation, a possible appointment of James Rosenbaum to the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and a possible appointment of Charlie Hefner to the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and possible appointment of Chief Guy Santone to the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and a possible appointment of Chief Richard Choppin to the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and possible appointment of William Hagerty to the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and a possible appointment of William DeLuca to the Erie County Redevelopment Authority.
Did he skip out? Did we, did he say them all? No offense. Did he say them all? Apologies. I wasn't sure.
He got them all.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion? After making Mr. Leon read all those, I sure hope we say yes.
I think, did we do William DeLuca?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please, on all the board and authority appointments tonight.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And before we adjourn tonight, I just want to thank all the members of council. This has been an interesting and sometimes tough year, so I'm looking forward to next year. Hopefully, things will be a little bit different. And also, as always, to thank our staff, which has helped us out tremendously throughout the year, and also the working cooperation that we always have, especially amongst Tracy and Jim who are here tonight. So Merry Christmas to all. And do we have a motion to adjourn? So move. Council stays adjourned. Thank you.